Good morning, everybody. It's 8:30. We'll call this morning's meeting to order. Our first item is the approval of the agenda, and we do have one agenda addition which I'd like to take right away, if you could please, and that's a request to approve to hire full-time corrections officer due to retirement.
Move to approve with addition?
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried. We'll move to citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard this morning on items on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to the approval of the bills and vouchers.
Move approve.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried. Julie, why don't you come up and we'll take care of yours so you can get back to your...
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. We have a corrections officer who's actually a team leader who is retiring from the jail. Her last day is Halloween, and I'm requesting that we replace her position. Start working on the process right away.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Just had a question on the cost savings that's listed. Obviously, there'll be step differences, but do you have a estimate?
I do not have the paperwork. Darren and I here, but I've got an emergency of a couple thousand dollars.
Mr. Chair, I did visit with Darren about that, and he does say he supplies that to the department, so we'll ask that they bring that in.
Yeah, be part of the packet. We used to see that as part of the request.
This one came in kind of late.
Yeah, that's my fault. I thought I had sent it over early in the week, and I saw it on my desk.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion's great. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
All right, we have...
Kevin, do you want to recognize?
Yeah, I'm going to do that right now.
Oh, excuse me. Sorry.
We have two contributions that we received from Western Minnesota Steam Pressures Reunion. One was for $750 for the Clay County Sheriff's Posse, and the other was a $500 contribution to the Clay County Jail Work Detail Team. Obviously, they both do an awful lot for steam pressures, and we just want to recognize Western Minnesota Steam Pressures for their contribution to those agencies. Thank you. All right. Kirk, we're going to look at amending the contract for Burns &amp; Mac, McDonald, to prepare requests for proposals. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. If I look a little blurry eyes because I have a new puppy that wants to get me up every two hours, so I'm not sure that was such a good idea to get a new puppy. I'm kind of an old guy to do that, but...
Should've talked to me.
As far as getting a puppy or age, no puppies. What I'm bringing before you today is I'm bringing before an amendment to a contract for Burns &amp; McDonald. They're currently doing quite a bit of work with us, and as I mentioned at the last board meeting, we are going to go out for requests for proposal for a joint public-private partnership for a single-sort MERC material recovery facility. And what this request does is request that Burns &amp; McDonald assist us in preparing the document and also to review the document and assist in negotiations. The amount of the material is on the last page, and the task that the Burns &amp; McDonald are outlined throughout the memo that I passed out. I have talked to Jenny as far as the contract amendment to ensure that everything, all the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed, and she assures me that everything is copacetic. So with that, I would ask your approval or stand for any questions you may have.
Kirk, as I was reading through this, I noticed that you're having a planning workshop on this, and it's going to be in Bloomington.
Mr. Chairman, it's not really a planning workshop. Essentially, what it is, and I don't know why they call it a planning workshop, but essentially what it is, is it's essentially Matt Evans, who's the principal, and Bob Craig's, who's another person, and myself sit down and determine specifically what needs to be in the RFP.
Would there be any reason for us to maybe ask Steve to be at that?
Mr. Chairman, we certainly can ask him to attend, but...
It might just be beneficial to you.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'll ask him.
All right.
I'm moved to authorize the revision.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
Very good. Thank you much.
Okay, next we have the United Way presentation. Kimberly, you've been doing this for quite some time, haven't you?
Some time. I think I've over 11 years.
Yeah. Very good. Good morning.
Good morning. I guess I'd like to thank you guys, as commissioners, for your past and continued support to the United Way. I do feel that a lot of the agencies and programs that the United Way supports does have a positive impact here at the county level. With that being said, I'd like to turn it over to Travis Christopher from the United Way to speak a little bit about what they're doing.
Sure, and thank you. And every year I come here, and I start with the same two words, and I'll do it again this year, is thank you. Thank you not only for the gift of treasure, but also the gift of time, the team here at Clay County. We usually get over 110 people, employees, every year that give to the campaign, which is fairly strong, and the amount they give is also rather high, too, and we appreciate that. What excites us most about what we're doing is what we call our four bold goals. It's to reduce hunger and homelessness, help children, help people be independent, and lift people up out of poverty. And we're real excited right now about things such as our school supply drive. You hear about it every summer. We had about 813 kids in the county received a backpack through that school supply drive, and it's a wonderful statement. We hear from caregivers and mothers and dads, "Thank you for allowing my child to start on a new footing," because they're making the decision between rent or food or school supplies and are able to fulfill that need. Another new partnership we've had since the last time I was in this room, we're working with M State. And actually, our campaign video this year we do every year, the emphasis is on workforce development, and we started a funding partnership with M State. We started with a welding program, and we have individuals who are now in the workforce because of this initial funding we've had. So it's going to be an exciting year for us. We have a lot of results to share. We'll share it with the team here again this year during our campaign, which is happening now. Again, we just thank you for the gift of time. It is making a difference. We are starting to measure what we do, and we have some great partners. Many of them we funded for years, places like Churches United, among others, and also like Jumpstart with the Morehead School District. But we're always evolving. We're always meeting new needs, so we'd like to share that story with the team, and we just say thank you for the time.
Question. Did you partner with Lakes and Prairies on that welding piece?
Absolutely.
And then are you also a partner in the CNA course that has been the workforce development piece?
Yes, actually, we're evolving that CNA course, and Lakes and Prairies has been a great partner behind that. And if you ever get the chance, just go to YouTube and look up United Way Cast Clay, and you'll see our campaign video about Eric from Morehead, and he talks about his experience with Lakes and Prairies, and now he's fully employed, which is nice to see. Thank you.
Kimberly, is it?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have our Fargo-Morehead Regional Freight Plan presentation from Adam from Metropolitan Council of Governments. Good morning.
Presentation. Good morning. My name is Adam Altenberg. I'm with the Metropolitan Council of Governments. Thank you for having me here this morning. A couple of weeks ago, our policy board approved the regional freight plan, which is a project we've been working on since about August 2016. After its approval, it was recommended by our chair to contact each of the jurisdictions to see if they would like some more information on this plan. So contacted Brian, and he asked if I would come here to talk to you today just to give some specifics about the plan. So a couple of things I'd like to talk about here this morning is just kind of talk about the profile section of this plan, talk a little bit about stakeholder outreach that we did, some of the recommendations that came forth from this plan, and then talk about the performance measures and project implementation that's recommended. So with the profile, basically, you looked at two primary sections, kind of your supply, looking at roadways, rail air cargo in the area, pipeline networks, and so forth, and then also looked at your demand and freight flows, looking at different commodities that are coming within the area, traveling in and out. Also looked at some forecasted freight demands up to 2045, so it kind of gives us an idea of what we can anticipate for freight movements in the coming decades. Some brief conclusions from this section. We rely heavily on our roadway networks for freight movements. It recounts for about 88% of all tonnage of freight in their area and then 82% of all freight volumes. Demand forecast suggests that we're going to have significant growth in the future. We have a pretty strong economy, and some of the commodities that are going to be showing the highest growth are kind of the pharmaceuticals and precision instruments, and those are going to require access to different types of freight services. So it's probably going to look more on potentially your air cargo. And we touched upon this a little bit, but the idea that drones are probably going to play a more important role in freight movements in the future, especially with what's considered that last mile freight movements. So when you have large shipments that come into an area, and they're at a storage facility, then getting it to your other retail outlets and that sort of thing, probably looking at those sorts of freight movements in the Again, just looking at your freight flows by volume, 88% truck, 11% by rail, 1% by other modes, which is mostly your aviation, and then by value, 82% truck, 4% rail, and then 14% air. And then just looking at our biggest trading partners, most of the trade is either coming from what's considered the Rocky Mountain area, so kind of Wyoming, Montana, and then also the Great Lakes area, so Minnesota, Wisconsin, Michigan. Again, by value here. So some projected changes in tonnage of certain commodities. A lot of these are going to have to do with mineral resources, so we're anticipating that in the future there's going to be a lot less coal, oil, also lumber products that are going to be coming through the area. But again, that's going to be offset by a projected increase in pharmaceuticals, precision instrument instruments, some machinery, grain products and such, electronics as well. So some of the stakeholder outreach. We conducted 16 interviews with different companies in the area as part of this project. You can see some of the companies that we talked to, including Bobcat, Crystal Sugar, Cargill, Digic key, and such. We also did stakeholder outreach with drivers in the area. So what we did with that is we contacted four of our bigger trucking carriers in the area, Minnet Express, Magnum Trucking, Calorin, and FedEx. And what we asked truckers to do is we had these break room maps, and we asked if they, in their routes, if they experienced any traffic issues, any infrastructure deficiencies in the roadway network, or any safety issues to kind of mark them on these maps. And what consultants did is they compiled that information to get a better sense of what are some of the areas that may need improvements here. And what I found is on the Minnesota side, it's pretty good. Again, there's a couple some issues kind of on 8th Street, Highway 75, when it comes into town here, Main Avenue. Also, intersections along 11 Streets in downtown Morehead were identified, especially with the turning rate at those intersections, that it was difficult for some truck movements. A couple of dots on the roundabout to south of town on Highway 75. Even though they're designed better, that trucks are able to kind of go up on a little bit of those roundabouts, so they don't have to do the full turn. Truckers still don't like them. It can be difficult to...
But it also, I mean, there's a commodity loss. If you go on that roundabout right now, there's a considerable amount of sugarbeets, which is a traffic hazard in itself.
Yeah. That's a very good point.
Oh, I'm going to go over the roundabout.
Yeah. But you can see from this map, though, a lot of the issues that people, the truckers identified were on the Fargo side, especially along the South Davenport and North Corridor in Fargo, West Fargo, and then some of the intersections on Main Avenue at 45th Street, and then out in West Fargo, I believe that's at 9th Street. Again, just the signalization, the turning rate AI, it's not as good for trucks trying to deal with those intersections. We also held a regional freight forum back in January of this year. We had about, I want to say about 35 attendees that attended this. It was at the Fargo City Commission Chambers. It was kind of a half-day session. Part of this is we asked the forum participants to kind of rank some of the issues they feel are most important. And one of the thing that came out is just, and it's not something that we can really address at our local or regional level, was the need for standards, truck sizing, and weight limits between states. Right now, in North Dakota, and I believe almost every other state, you have a maximum tonnage of 129,000 pounds that can be carried. But when you come into Minnesota, that drops to, I want to say, about 80,000 pounds. So it's an issue that if that can be standardized, it definitely helps with freight flows coming into the area and traveling through Minnesota. Another issue is the access to containerized intermodal rail service. If freight cargo is going to be shipped overseas, it requires a different type of container. So different from the containers that are usually hauled on your long haul, your trucks, your semis. But these containers can be utilized by rail services, and it's thought that if we had an intermodal rail service center in our area, that those commodities could be offloaded onto these specialized containers that could be used for shipping overseas. I won't touch, this is just kind of a SWOT analysis we did, looking at our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats with regard to freight in the area. Our strengths, again, we have excellent transportation infrastructure. We have real limited highway congestion at the moment. Weaknesses, one of the things that came along with this is just our weather in the winter. We can't always anticipate road closures and that sort of thing. That was one of the issues that was identified. Opportunities, we have several very, very good industrial parks in the area, so we definitely have room to expand industries in both the North Dakota and Minnesota side of the river. And then one of the biggest threats that was identified is right now is our truck drivers shortage, and just kind of the lack of skilled workforce, especially for the need for drivers and that sort of thing. So some recommendations. These are kind of based on kind of a cost and timeline. So you kind of have some of these quick start projects that are low cost and pretty easy to implement. Also looking at some program enhancements that can help with freight movements. Identified some surface transportation projects that we could look at, and then kind of some long-term horizon projects that are helping in the future. So some quick start projects that were identified. One is the idea to have a regional commercial truck operator information webpage. Right now, we have actually four different webpages that truckers need to utilize if they're trying to get information in the area. We have information on Minnesota DOT website, North Dakota DOT, and then cities of Fargo and West Fargo also have their own separate webpages for trucking information. So it's the thought that all the information could be consolidated into one page. That would be a benefit, especially for truckers that might not be knowledgeable of the area or are coming into the area for the first time. It might be a better resource for them. Another quick start project is to enhance or expand our regional truck route network. Again, right now, cities of Fargo and West Fargo, they have identified truck routes, as well as NDOT, but the city of Morehead does not have a recognized truck route. And it's their thought that it's something that it would require additional resources in terms of signage. It would also need to go through a process with Minnesota DOT to determine the routes that would be used for trucks in the area. So, but the reason that this would be good to implement is, again, I know we're all pretty familiar with our roadway networks. We're familiar with Highway 75, Highway 10. But again, for people coming into the area for the first time, you do have GPS now these days, but it's still, you're not as familiar with our roadway network, and there's always a chance that you're not quite sure which roadways you need to travel on to get from point A to point B. So it was the thought that it would be good for the city of Morehead to coordinate, to develop a truck route network that could be utilized for truckers. And then another quick start project that was identified is landscaping for truck sightlines. This is something I really wasn't familiar with when we first started this project, but it makes sense. Truckers, when they're driving, they're at a more of an elevated position than we are in our cars and trucks. And trees, if they're not manicured, have the pencil to kind of block your sightlines if you're coming to an approach, as you can kind of see from this image where it's difficult to kind of see the traffic that's coming from the left there. So it's just kind of working with our public works departments, other departments that can help to make sure that truck access lines are good. So program enhancements for freight. One of the things that MetroCOC is going to be doing as part of this plan is to roll our sort of review committee into a freight advisory group that can help with some of our planning efforts. What's kind of what the biggest part of this group is probably going to be looking at, so when we start up our next long-range transportation plan, we're probably going to be looking at performance metrics, which I'll touch upon here in a little bit. But this group would also help to kind of look at these metrics and see if there's any additional changes or modifications that would be needed so that we can better plan for transportation improvements that can anticipate freight needs as well. Also, part of these program enhancements is looking at our pavement and bridge conditions as part of our performance metrics, and then that can be rolled into this mobility performance score card for truck routes. Some surface transportation projects. I'll just touch upon the one that was listed here for the Minnesota side, is looking at 11th Street, kind of doing an intersection review between Main Avenue and First Avenue North to see if there is a need to look at some turning radii improvements in the future.
How's that going to, isn't that also where Morehead is looking at a long-term underpass plan?
Yeah, and that's actually part of one of our horizon projects here, too.
So it seems to me if they're looking at a turning radius thing for trucks right now, would that be a short-term deal? Because it seems to me that long-term, Morehead's answer is an underpass there.
Yeah, that would be more of a short-term, potentially midterm project. But the second item here is looking at additional funding for grade separations in the region. The one project that this plan touches upon is, we know that Morehead has applied repeatedly for these fast lane grants for grade separation in downtown Morehead. In the recent bonding bill in Minnesota, there was funding that was approved for the grade separation at Main Avenue and then 21st, but nothing was approved for downtown. So it was, the recommendation of this plan is to, recently, this summer, there's actually a new grant program called Infrastructure for Rebuilding America, and it was recommended to roll these previous fast lane grants that the city of Morehead has written and try to roll into a new grant proposal for this infra program, which is due by November 2nd for funding for a grade separation for downtown Morehead. So yeah, that would, take a look at that. I'll touch on this last, this last item, too, is the need for, potential need for an I-29, I-94 bypass through truck traffic. Multiple studies that we've done, and it's probably been talked about for about 15, 20 years or more, is the need for, we know traffic volumes are going to be increasing here in the future, and it's probably going to be more than our interstates can handle at the moment. And it's thought that the best opportunity would be to have some sort of southern bypass in our area. It had been talked about, like at that 52nd Avenue, 60th Avenue to Morehead, that's a route that could go all the way out to the interstate. Now, it's starting to look like potentially looking at 76th Avenue in North Dakota, and then that would go to 80th Avenue in the Morehead, Minnesota side. Potentially looking at that as a future bypass option. With that option, there has been discussion now on the North Dakota, Cass County side. Most of what is 76th Avenue west of I-29 is a township road, and Cass County has been talking about potentially taking that over so that it could start to work with North Dakota DOT when they start to look at an overpass at 76 and I-29, and then talking about, again, using that as a potential bypass route through the area. But that's kind of a long-term, long-term horizon project that was identified here.
When you say long-term, what, how many years out, or...
Thirty, probably.
Thirty?
Yeah. And then just briefly, some performance measures and project implementation. Again, looking at some of our planning factors that we identified in our last long-range transportation plan, looking at some measure objectives and data metrics, and then kind of this draft scorecard that could be used for our next long-range transportation plan, where we start to plan more for freight improvements in the area. And then additional funding sources from Minnesota side, looking at highway program, the intermodal program, and the transportation economic program. That's all I got. Do you have any other questions?
Questions?
Just briefly, is there a reason that Trans Systems was not an agency that was identified to have discussions with? I mean, they really are another larger freight transportation in the area, and specifically, I think, because of the locations that they haul from, get a pretty good grasp on what the needs are.
That's a very good point. I am aware of them.
Because it seems like the agencies that we're representing are really 18-wheelers with enclosed freight, not ag freight, correct?
Yes, correct. That's a very good point.
Because, just in looking at the locations where the concerns were, it seems like they were specific routes, and I guess I would be curious to know if those companies that you reached out to hauled along the same routes?
Yeah.
Because it all kind of seemed really consolidated.
Yeah.
I think if maybe we would have reached out to some ag freight in Clay County, I think the concerns would be more than... I think the concerns would be more than the areas that were represented. Because I know the calls I get are concerns in different areas. So just, I mean, just a thought of next time you have a forum to reach out to some of the egg freight as well.
I know as part of a MINDA District 4 study that was done a couple of years ago, again, I know there are more concerns on Highway 75, both north and south in Clay County that were identified as that project. But they would probably be a good person to have on this freight committee that we are going to be rolling over. So that will, that's a good point. We'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
The Highway 10 corridor issue regarding the turning lanes and you mentioned A Street and Main is a good example. And I, I know that the city had been working and maybe Commissioner Haney can address it a little bit. But that's been a bottleneck, or it used to be a bottleneck, from trucks coming from Fargo, their North Dakota side, heading east. And they get to there and then they would have to turn right at Dairy Queen location and go down blocks north. And then, and it just, it was a big bottleneck. And I know that there's been considerable work done in this.
Yeah, the Sims project, yeah.
Yeah, to help with that. But I also thought that they were looking at having them go further to the east and then north. Is that, is there?
Well, there's a considerable number of them that use First Avenue South, as it's called. The place that the railroad wants to close. And there's a lot of trucks that use that to come back and forth. You're well aware of that. 3,250 cars a day or vehicles a day go over that. And that's invaluable for moving back and forth.
But I noticed, I noticed there's still, even with the work that Moore did, that intersection, it still can be a bottleneck. And then when you get with trains involved, it's a mess. Anyway, I think Moore is aware of that and hopefully they're working with Mr. Cog on some solutions.
Well, that's what he was talking about on 11th Street, doing that same kind of improvement. Putting those turn lanes on there.
And when you talk about looking out into the future, and you mentioned 76th on south. And at some point in time, when those things are identified, I think there was a policy put in place that, that they even be signed as future arterial heart. So is there, has there been any changes to what were considered future roadways and bypasses?
Well, I, in the past, I think, I think people were, were again, looking at that 52nd Avenue, 60th Avenue corridor as the potential. An issue with that is, is the lack of right-of-way in the, right when you come into Fargo on 52nd Avenue.
It's too developed now.
Yeah, yeah. We kind of lost opportunity to expand our roadway network from, yeah, from University to 25th Street there. Another issue with that is, and again, this is kind of an issue in fluxes, but with the diversion project. The Corps had identified funding for viaducts over the diversion along county road facilities. And only 32nd Avenue, I believe it's 32nd Avenue, 40th Avenue, and then 76th Avenue are considered county facilities. 52nd Avenue is not considered a county facility past Cheyenne there. So there would, there wouldn't be potential federal funding for across it there. But there would be at 76th Avenue South, which is less developed and there's more potential, more opportunity to develop that corridor as a arterial region.
And you mentioned, you mentioned the expanding truck traffic that's going to be on I-29, I-94 corridor and part of the need for a bypass for the truck traffic. At one time, there was considerable discussion, and you talked about traffic coming from Montana and then from, from the east, but you didn't talk about the north. And there still is considerable traffic that comes from Canada.
There is, yeah.
That comes into our area. And at one time, there was actually talk of having a major truck route being on State Highway 32, I think it was. Have you, do you recall any of that, or is that still a topic of discussion?
I know, I believe that was part of a, kind of a Beltway. It was part of a study that we did in maybe five or six years ago.
That's about the right time.
It was part of a Beltway alignment. I'm not as aware of that. It was a little bit before my time. But I know that we do have that included in one of our, kind of like.
I guess if you were to hear of that, it would be nice for us to be in the loop on that because that changed the dynamics a lot in our county, in terms of truck traffic. So if you hear of those discussions. And finally, my comment is on drones. I think we've yet to see where drones are going to go.
The jury is out. It's, that's very true.
Well, I think it's more likely than not that we will see more of that. I saw a news article where they were, they were comparing more realistically to the cartoon that Jetsons. That's pretty amazing, but that's where technology is, is heading. So it's going to be interesting to see. Thank you. Next, we have our request to approve our memorandum of understanding with Clay County Collaborative. And we have Carolyn and we have Rhonda here. Good morning.
Okay, I'll get us started. We are, Carolyn and I have been meeting quite a bit on some different projects. This MOU that we're requesting being one of them. It is for children's mental health services within our schools. So just to preface this conversation, we do, in the budget, we do have funds budgeted for children's mental health, specifically mental health services in the schools. Typically, we've been spending those funds on Lake Agassiz special education for kids needing day treatment for mental health reasons and in the Morehead School districts for those same reasons. There's been some funding and billing changes over the years and issues that have come up more so in our rural school districts that we really need to pay attention to. So Carolyn and I have met with some of the rural superintendents and principals over time and have been working with them on how we can better address some of the needs in those schools as well. So as a result of that, we're not, I'm not requesting any additional funds in the budget. We're just, would like to pull about $20,000 of those funds that are currently budgeted and use them to work with the collaborative and Yulin, Yulin Hiderdal, Holly and Barnesville school districts to try to increase some mental health services in those schools. So I did send in the packet the MOU that Carolyn had put together. And I did review it with Jenny as well. We felt that just an MOU would be sufficient for this project. I would request that I be given approval to sign the MOU and then send the funds to the collaborative, who will then administer the county's $20,000 as well as some funds that the collaborative is investing. And the three school districts, the three rural school districts will be investing as well. So that's kind of the request today. And I know Carolyn has done a ton of work on this through the collaborative, so maybe you'd have more confidence.
Well, about a year and a half ago, the collaborative did a strategic planning process and providing some mental health services to our rural schools came up quite high in the identified needs through that strategic plan. So I'm excited that we were able to put something together to address that identified need. Both, Yulin Hiderdal has used Summit Guidance for several years and their program has increased over time. Both the Holly School and Barnesville School considered proposals from the Village Family Service Center as well as Lakeland Mental Health. And Barnesville chose Lakeland Mental Health to work on and they'll be doing more of the school-based type work with the students there. And Holly Public Schools chose the Village Family Service Center because they want more of the kind of therapy and diagnostic component for the students in that school because it's quite a hardship for them to be coming into Fargo and using a lot of schools. So very excited about doing this. The collaborative as well will be putting in $20,000 for this program. And then both Lakeland and the Village will be using insurance billing whenever possible. So the funds that the county and the collaborative will be putting in will be used for those kids who don't have insurance or perhaps they're underinsured. Or we're also finding that some families have quite high deductibles, even up to $10,000. And so are foregoing some of those mental health services just because of that deductible. So we'll be able to reach those kids. Both schools are very happy with the services and are pleased that we were able to bring this out to them. I should say all three of them. And so things are in motion and have started in our schools. And I'll be meeting with them probably quarterly just to check in and make sure that needs are being met and we don't need to tweak a little bit.
Commissioner Mulcahy?
So I had a discussion with Mike McCarthy, who's on the collaborative, I believe. And his comments were that the rural superintendents had been concerned about the lack of benefit for some of these programs. Is that the truancy program that, or are we talking about this?
I'm thinking that probably was the truancy discussion.
And that's another project that Rhonda and I have spent quite a bit of time this summer addressing those needs.
Well, in your comments, I think that it's good that both Holly and Barnesville have identified specifically what agency can address their, their needs and where they want to go with that. So I'm glad to hear that. I was just concerned that, you know, if the rural superintendents are feeling like maybe the collaborative's not being helpful in certain areas, I just didn't know how we could better address that.
And we have spent some time bringing out information on the various collaborative programs that we have out to all of the school districts, trying to reach out to building principals and as well as their social workers. All of the programs that the collaborative provide are to be county-wide. So we just need to continue to let them know about what's available.
The other comment I would just make is that, you know, for students who are experiencing truancy issues, whether it be the older youth or kids in elementary, you know, it wouldn't be uncommon that we find mental health issues happening as well. And so I do think that this additional service will help address some of those issues as well. I think we'll, we'll be able to meet with those kids in that area as well.
This is a little timely. Just not too long ago, at our Greater Fargo-Moorehead Economic Development Meeting, we had presentations done by the tri-state college presidents as well as the superintendents of our school districts for Morehead Fargo and West Fargo. And one of the topics that Dr. Schatz raised from the Fargo Public Schools was this issue. And Fargo Public Schools right now is investing into staffing and other things, a half a million dollars a year right now just to get a handle on all these things. I would encourage you Carolyn to, and Rhonda and whoever else, to also speak with Dr. Schatz and to see what they're doing. And it's a collaboration in those regards can be good because not only do we want to put money into self, we want to make sure it's working. You know, so, so I think there might be some, it seems to me that they're really working on it directly, you know, through their school district too. So, but it's something to, to monitor anyway.
Right, right. Yeah, and I know specifically Superintendent Kovash, I know she's been a part of various meetings that involve the, you know, Fargo-Morehead area, the school districts, and is learning quite a bit as well. But I think that's a good point. I was hearing a little bit about their efforts as well.
And you know what, you know, we raised, you know, I raised the issue about the Morehead Public Schools and the Fargo, because there are bigger ones, but the problem still exists in the small ones.
Yes, yes it does.
It's just like, it's just like the opioid thing doesn't have a border of Morehead. In Clay County, it goes across the county. So, but anyway, it's.
Does DGF and Morehead already involve these programs or?
Yeah, they have, DGF and Morehead have providers already in their schools providing mental health services. And they have some funding, it's called School Linked Mental Health Grants through the Department of Human Services. But we are certainly involved with their schools as well. This is just a kind of a, a unique way to get some of those funds to these other school districts that don't have the School Linked Mental Health Grants.
All right, so we have a request to enter into this memorandum of understanding.
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU and authorize Rhonda as the signing agent.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same thing? Motion carried. Next, we have the truancy.
I just had one other question. I just noticed on this spec invoice, do we need to decide if it's semi-annual or one invoicing? Are you doing that?
My recommendation would be that for 2017, that I would go ahead and authorize the $20,000 to be transferred to the collaborative now. And then next year, it certainly could be in two installments.
I'll include in my motion, if I can do that, that, can we or not?
Well, it's already.
Should I make a motion on the billing?
Yeah, make a motion.
I'll make a motion on the billing to just authorize Rhonda at her discretion.
All right, we have a motion to pay it according to the discretion of Rhonda. Second. Up to $20,000. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. All right, thank you. Next one we have is the truancy.
Yes, truancy intervention. Okay, so just a little, well, also just to preface this conversation is that we have, you have authorized in previous budgets and going into 2018, $32,000 of county funds to be invested in truancy intervention, what we call our TIPS program, which is a contract through the village. They also receive collaborative funds. They receive funds from the United Way and funds from the school districts. This last budget process, I had added an additional, not quite $18,000 into the budget to try to address some of the demands on our truancy program. So that did get approved in your 2018 preliminary budget. So it would be a total of about $50,000 that would be available for our, for this truancy program. This Morehead School District increased their contribution by the same amount. I had requested, the collaborative did as well. And we have a request into the United Way for that increased amount as well. With those increased funds, with the addition of the Dorothy Dawes Elementary School and the increase in demands in addressing our truancy, we, the program really needed those investments for some staffing resources. Some of the things we're going to change is rather than the TIPS workers being employed only 10 months, we're going to take two of them to be employed throughout the summer. And we want to implement a pilot project at the Ellen Hopkins Elementary School. And that's what this new contract is about. What we would like to do at Ellen Hopkins, it's one of our schools that we do see an increased issue with school attendance for those, some of the kids at Ellen Hopkins. We'd like to provide more intense services to the kids that we're seeing there. And this contract would allow us to revise our services there at Ellen Hopkins in a little different way and allow us to draw down some federal funds to help support our pilot project. So what, what I would be requesting is that. So, what I would be requesting is that the fifty thousand that we have set aside for the truancy program, that we invest that money into the pilot project at Ellen Hopkins. They will, they're going to have full-time staff there at Ellen Hopkins that will actually be employed twelve months out of the year. And this staff person will provide some intense interventions to kids that are struggling with school attendance and their families. That's the key. It will really be a family component, case plans will be developed, they really will be following these kids and more intensely working with them, much like we do when those cases get referred to the county. Our role is, we do the same thing we provide with called Child Welfare Targeted Case Management. Sometimes we have to file petitions with the court if we're not able to get these elementary and work with the families to get the kids to school. But we really want to try to intervene early and intensely and prevent the kids from, and families from coming into our child protection system and our court system. This service is eligible for what's called Child Welfare Targeted Case Management. So, if we are serving twenty kids, for example, at Ellen Hopkins, and fifteen of them are on Minnesota medical assistance, maybe low income, or maybe there's a mental health issue, or whatever, the Village can bill for their service. And then what happens is, the state sends the county a bill for fifty percent of that. So, we would use our fifty thousand to pay for that, what we call non-federal share. So, we're able to leverage some federal dollars in to help the program. So, that's kind of how the funding works. And again, we're decided to pilot it, just with Ellen Hopkins, to see what kind of outcomes we have and what kind of difference we can make.
Commissioner Groves.
I was just wondering about the truancy program. I realize some of those kids do get involved into the social services, but why is the truancy program our problem, not the school's problem? I mean, what is the school's role in it?
Well, Jenny can speak to that too, but the statute really does, if kids meet a certain threshold, for elementary kids, it's actually looked at as neglect. So, it's called educational neglect, because we're really looking at what's happening within the family, what's preventing the parents or the caretakers from getting those elementary kids to school. So, that comes in as a child protection report. For the middle and high school, it's looked at as truancy, and there's a statute, there's statutes that indicate if there's so many unexcused absences, and it meets the threshold, referrals can be sent to the court. And so, they come through social services, we try to figure out what's happening, why is school attendance an issue, we try to work for services, we work with the school very closely on truancy issues. And if that's, we're not able to reconcile it, sometimes then petitions are sent to the court.
I just wanted to know, do the schools get funds for this too?
Yeah, so the schools are all contributing funds for the truancy program, except Yulin is going to do a little something different this next year, correct? And so, but otherwise, Morehead and all the other school districts do contribute to the truancy intervention program, financial funds. And then they work very closely with the TIPS staff. And our levels of intervention involve interventions by the school, interventions by the truancy staff, which is run through the Village, interventions by social services, interventions by the court. So, we always try to address it up here, you know, at the school level first, and then it kind of moves, moves up our levels as the issue becomes more chronic or severe.
Rhonda, has there been changes to the, for lack of not knowing how to say it other than this, but to the dropout age for?
I think now it's actually gone up. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it, they have to be in school up till the age of eighteen unless a parent could sign them out.
Parent can sign out before eighteen.
Okay, if a parent signs them out, okay. Because I, that's what I, I was just having a conversation with somebody about that exact issue. And it was one where this particular family ended up being homeschooled. And their option, if they didn't homeschool, was potentially to end up in these truancy issues with, so.
Sure.
But that was, that was, I think that's a change recently in the law, isn't that where the, where it was up to eighteen?
Terms of the dropout?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not aware.
I was going to say, maybe four or five years ago?
I was going to say, as long as I can remember being involved in child protection, so four, five, six years maybe.
Okay.
The truancy staff employed by the Village are actually physically located within the various schools. So, again, they work very closely with the school district staff in monitoring and tracking and trying to intervene when kids are missing not only full days of school, but class periods too. So, so we're, again, the numbers are just high, and we're trying to look at different ways of intervening for these kids that can make a difference.
This is something, again, that, in that same presentation, that some of those funds that Fargo Public Schools was using was part of the truancy issue as well. And I just hope that there can be discussions back and forth to find out what's working and what isn't.
Yeah, absolutely.
The truancy program, actually, many of the students get referred out to mental health programs or in-home family skills and things like that. So, it gets kind of a, I don't want to say necessarily a feeder, but it is a good way as well to identify some of those kids that are struggling with things, you know, outside of academics.
Thank you. Well, we have a request for service contract with Village Family Service Center.
Approve.
We have a motion to approve. Second, any further comments or questions? Rhonda, do you have anything else?
I would just comment that this, this contract I did send down to the State Department of Human Services, they do have to review it and approve it.
Okay.
But we've already been vetting it back and forth, so I think a...
I think the motion can be subject to, or conditioned that it's approved by the state.
Sure.
Right. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, committee reports.
Last week, I was contacted by Eric Dawes from the Diversion Authority, and we had a discussion on easements. The work to develop how the Diversion Authority will compensate easements has been on hold because of the litigation and actually federal decision. But I had been critical about continuing the dialogue in developing that. At some point, no matter what the scope of the project is, there will be some sort of need for easement. So, we talked a little bit about what that would or could look like. I also attended a meeting on invitation from Governor Dayton last week with members of the DNR for dialogue with Minnesota representatives on concerns, on issues in regards to the Diversion Authority. I feel like my criticism of the Diversion Authority and discussions with people negatively affected from the project will be addressed by discussions with Governor Burgum and Governor Dayton in hopes of developing a step forward. So, encouraged by the presence of the governor in Morehead last week, and appreciate his invitation. That concludes my reports.
All right, Commissioner Whelan.
Let's see, I had a meeting about the heating system for the jail after our board meeting last week, and I think we came to some resolution on that, and we'll be bringing that forward to the board here probably soon. And I also attended a meeting with the governor at Morehead City Hall regarding the diversion issues, and he pretty much listened to each of us, and then met with Governor Burgum after that, and I think everybody's aware of what their position was. So, that was it for me.
Commissioner Groves.
Tuesday, I went to the ribbon cutting up at the solar complexes there. If you recall, we purchased forty-eight panels up there, they did a ribbon cutting of that. But also, Minnesota State University, Morehead and Concordia also purchased a panel system, just like we did. So, there's a good group of people out there for that ribbon cutting thing. Thursday, we had the campus improvement, that we're still discussing, moving some people around over in the Family Service Center, trying to make room for Steve, ours needs some room for a juvenile, he's got to move his administrative offices out of the juvenile center, and we're still trying to find some place for him. And we're starting to work on that, getting some, some people are leaving, and some people will get moved around. Hopefully, we can find room for everybody. Thursday afternoon, Mayor France, the tax commissioner, was up here giving some, Minnesota State University, Morehead, he had a session on where our channel fund dollars are going. So, I attended that session, and the majority of it's going to education and helping human services. And I spoke to him a little bit about more tax dollars going to mental health issues, like in our jails, you know, instead of building bigger correctional facilities, you know, put money into the mental health issues, you know, instead of just building bigger correctional facilities. Friday, I had the Partnership in Health in Barnesville, went over some rate increases that they're going to do. There's quite a few different rates for different services they provide. There's around a ten-dollar, a ten to fifteen dollar rate increase for some of the services they plan to do, that's like for beverages and for food services and stuff like that, for their licenses, they're going to up the rates for those. Had a good presentation on tobacco-related issues by, yeah. And let's see, what else are we the? I guess that pretty much covered that. Oh, the audit, they also, we had the audit, out the Partnership for Health, and that audit, I think, I don't know if you were in that audit or not, it's the one I couldn't attend, and, oh, I guess they got a good report on the audit.
Yep.
What else, the four meetings, that was it.
Was that?
I guess, also the tobacco, you know, what they're trying to do is raise the tobacco issues to, what they got, they got a program called T-21, they want to raise it to twenty-one years of age, so. He spoke quite a bit of that, and how that program's going. That was it.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Ene.
Tuesday, I had attended the Morehead City Planning Meeting, and they had a code review there in regards to electronic signboards in the downtown area of Morehead. Specifically, Pizza Patrol has asked to put up electronic signboard up there on their property just along Rain Avenue. And there was a discussion about changing the regulation in downtown Morehead because of, almost every sign there is not in compliance. And so, they were talking about changing the criteria for the compliance and all that, so that they be in compliance. And then, there was also a discussion about changing the Twelfth Avenue Corridor, Twelfth Avenue South in Morehead Corridor to, there's a special classification there called a neighborhood commercial classification, where apartments and businesses can both be built along that corridor. And it was the recommendation of the planning committee that they review that and that come back with a recommendation as, that would be just a strictly commercial district, that's just a kind of a superfluous classification that is not needed at this point in time, was the opinion of the committee. And then on Thursday, I attended the Children's Mental Health Local Advisory Committee, and we had received budget information from the Clay County, from, from Social Services. And then on Thursday, I also attended the campus improvement meeting with Commissioner Groves and the committee members, and we talked about the space needs in the FSC building, and Commissioner Groves gave all that information. So, that was it for me.
All right, good. Okay, I had, last week, we did meet, as Commissioner Whelan said, regarding the heating issues with the new correctional facility. And for the longest time, we had, we had been looking at one of two potential options that would require some changes to the boiler plant. And in the discussions, there became a third option that was probably a better option in the long run, so that, you know, you're going to be hearing a little bit more about that. If you recall, we had heating issues, we had established a budget of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for that. That number is, when Brian is ready, and we get a little bit more, that's going to come up, and it's going to be considerably more than that. But we also are going to be looking at this option of seeing significant annual savings to help make up for it. But in that process, I also had discussions with Brian about this whole, both these projects and combined the estimated cost of them, the bond issues, and if you recall, we had established a bond, total bond of about fifty-two-five on this project, and that's what we based our ability and how we're going to pay back those bonds. We, the good news is, we're still well within those parameters. But I did request, and I've gotten a first review of it back from, from, I was working through Brian, and we asked Lori to, each one of these line items to show the original estimated amount, the amount that we paid to date and the remaining balance. And we refined that a little bit more since I met with Brian.
Perfected it.
And perfected it, yeah, so to speak. But, but this is something now that I've asked that just be a given to the full board monthly, so you can really see where we are with the original price, what we've paid year-to-date, and then the remaining balance, and also how that compares with the available revenues from the bonds. And so, right now, we're, you know, at the latest number that we looked at, we're probably still one point five million more in bonds than what our cost of our project is. So, we're still in good shape there, but I just wanted to kind of give you an update on that as to what's coming. That heating issue is one that's going to be important, but I think you'll, you'll see there through their presentation, and Joe from our Buildings and Grounds, that over the long haul, it's going to, this third option will really pay for itself. Okay, so then, I also did, was part of the meeting with Governor Dayton. He did meet with the Minnesota members of the Diversion Authority. The day when he was here, when he met both with some upstream and downstream people regarding the diversion. And we, we had a good hour-long discussion with the governor, and there was a lot of good dialogue there, and he, I was really glad to see he was, really seemed to be interested in resolving this. And I think their plan moving forward is, is one that's better than what we've had. I think I said, five, six years ago, that this would never be decided by a county commissioner or by a city council, but it was going to be some higher authority, and so it's good that the governors are, are doing what they're doing. So, we'll, the only thing is, is that somebody is still going to have some impacts, and hopefully we can minimize those. Then, we did have the Clay County Joint Powers Meeting Thursday morning, and I just wanted to thank Kirk Rosenberger and Steve Moore. They gave a presentation both on the, how the single sort has been going, as well as discussion about the future of the transfer tape, transfer station and its location up at Thirty-Fourth Street. And that went pretty well, and then we continued to work on finalizing the intergovernmental retreat. Yeah, it's just never-ending. It's like a year-long planning on the intergovernmental retreat. So, and then a reminder that we have the District Four Meeting on Friday, October twenty-seventh. Four meeting on Friday, October 27. That's something that, do we enroll individually on that, or can we...
It looks like they bill on sign-in.
It's billed based on sign-in, okay. So, all right. And then open enrollment, of course, for all of our employees is going on. And I'm sure that's a busy time for our Human Resources Department. All right, that's Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one thing here. From MCIT, delegate Grant Whalen, Frank Gross is the alternate. Any change in that, or we get to go on that, okay? And we don't need to send anything back, just they got a letter to confirm that.
They're pretty thrilled about it.
And also parking fleet vehicles and things. All meetings that I have attended have been covered in detail by you folks. So, thank you.
We will be adjourned.